Kulos, here. Kulos, here, Johnson.
Yeah.
Johnson, here, Frosto.
Here.
Also, here, Vlado.
Here.
Uh, here, Beeta.
Here.
Yeah, here, Rita.
Here.
Rita, here, Dammig.
Here.
Here, Holly.
Here.
Holly, here, Fairwell.
Here.
Fairwell, here, Osling.
Yeah.
Osling, here, Thompson.
Here.
Thompson, here, Carr.
Here.
Carr, here, Pittman.
Here.
Pittman, here, Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here, fourteen present.
Thank you very much. Now, next will be a presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of November the twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Bureau. Any questions? Roll call.
Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi, Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi, Frosto.
Hi.
Frosto, hi, Vlado.
Hi.
Vlado, hi, Beeta.
Hi.
Beeta, hi, Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi, Dammig.
Hi.
Dammig, hi, Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Fairwell.
Hi.
Fairwell, hi, Osling.
Hi.
Osling, hi, Thompson.
Hi.
Thompson, hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi, Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi, fourteen present.
Thank you very much. Next is public comment. Anyone? I'll just need you to name an address.
My name is Ken Nosling, one twenty-seven hundred West Gate Drive in Field Heights. Uh, last council meeting, um, it was discussed about the fire chief's position. I think it was brought up by a couple of the aldermen about my application or my resume that was turned in, uh, which I turned in November first, uh, emailed November first of two thousand seventeen. When asked why, when, when you were asked why my resume did not come up in an interview, it was said that I never turned it in on time. To be honest with you, that's a fabrication of the truth. Uh, I also handed in an email, or my resume to your secretary. I hand-delivered that because I hadn't received any notification that you received it. So I thought it would be a good idea to possibly, you know, hand one in also. I still had no, um, notification. Then, I had found out that interviews were going on on Monday and Tuesday and that, you know, there was gonna be an appointment, uh, very quick after that. Also, at the city council meeting, uh, the attorney went ahead and read right, that was right off your website for employment for fire chief, about the state statutes that require, uh, what education requirements are for firemen that aren't on this particular department for ten years. While I didn't qualify for that part, I did qualify for the ten years that appeared on your website. But what you did was, you failed to even actually bring that up. So what I am here to ask is why there was two statements made that were false?
They weren't false, sir.
Yes, they were false.
That's your opinion.
Well, I, I sent you an email, I sent you several emails. You have yet to answer any of my emails. You know, after being here for thirty years, I'm not asking for anything, but I thought maybe I could get a little bit of respect to have you answer my emails.
Anything else?
Yes, no, I have plenty. Okay? Why, why won't, why are you lying again?
I just want to answer, thank you.
Why are you lying again?
I'm not lying, sir. You have a less than a minute.
Why did you not, why did you say, why did you tell everybody, in front of everybody, when you have the email, that I turned my, uh, resume in late?
Anything else?
Does anybody else would like to question this?
Anything else?
Anybody else like to question that? I'd just like an answer, that's all I want. Why are you refusing to answer me?
It's public comment, sir.
Your public comment or mine?
Your public comment.
Right, I'm asking why you're, you won't answer me.
No response.
What?
It's my response, no response. Thank you. May I have a response?
I mean, I think it's, it would be a good idea, just so you give me a response. I don't, I don't think I'm asking for very much. You lie.
Thank you very much, sir.
You lie.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
No, I'm...
You got less than a minute.
Okay, I'll wait for my answer.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm waiting.
You got my response?
Come on, just answer it. Why, why are you doing that? Why did you not respond to me? You also gave interviews to a couple people that weren't even qualified.
Sorry, we just sent you a letter, we just sent you a letter.
You sent it, I received it.
Okay.
But you lied. Anybody like to question this?
I'd, I'd like an answer.
It's public comment, come on.
So what did, I don't understand what that means. How's it an opinion when it's, it's on paper?
Thank you very much.
No, I have nothing else.
Thank you very much.
I understand where you come from now.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Citizens don't deserve that.
Name an address.
Rachel Roscoe, one nineteen fifty-seven South Longwood. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I think this is, uh, the last, uh, city council this month. And also, I wanted to bring up the fact that, uh, Friday, February the sixteenth, uh, Blackout tonight in Blue Island will be here in this hall. And, uh, I invited Dr. Lynette Daly, uh, Doctor of Philosophy and Education from Governor's State University. She'll be doing a biography on Harriet Tubman. The dinner will be at, from six o'clock to seven o'clock, uh, the program from seven to nine, everyone's invited. I also would like to say, happy birthday, Alderman Thompson.
Oh. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And I'm assuming you'll be back for next year. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
And happy birthday to you, Mr. Roscoe.
I'll need to name that.
Dan McGough, one thirty-five hundred West one hundred twenty-seven Street.
If you want to leave the mic?
I'm very sorry.
Thank you.
I just want to introduce myself. Uh, we purchased the old G W electric building, uh, thirty-five one hundred West one hundred twenty-seven. Uh, we do have some exciting plans, so just wanted to, uh, let everyone know what our plans are, what we're planning to do. Um, and then we do need your help, uh, to make these plans happen, get everything across the finish line. Uh, but we purchased this summer, a hundred and sixty thousand square foot warehouse. It's been vacant for six years. Uh, it was actually vacant for so long, they were considering tearing down the building, uh, G W. It's saying that that may happen, and we have a chance to have the whole building leased and occupied and renovated. Um, you know, there's a couple of things we do need your help with. One is, I think in January, uh, we will need your support in getting the six feet tax abatement. Um, we've had, we have leases out for the entire building. So potentially out by February first, a hundred sixty thousand square foot lease, but that's all contingent on getting the six feet abatement. Uh, and we do think, uh, we are the perfect candidate for it, uh, because we mean, you know, not one, only one requirement's required, but we mean all three. Um, one has been vacant longer than two years, we've been vacant for six years, so we're well past that threshold. Uh, two is, we do plan to put a significant amount of renovations, so we hope the building will be around, you know, forever as long as I live. Uh, so that's exciting. Uh, and then three, uh, just based off the ceiling height and molding docks and things like that, um, it's, it's a, it's a challenged building per se, uh, so a six feet is, is, is very necessary to get this building occupied, and it's contingent on all the leases we have. Um, and it's also important, as far as the timing too, you know, these leases are, are February first starting dates, and if we blow past the timeline, there's a, a strong chance we could lose these tenants. Um, so it's important that, uh, we do everything we can to expedite, expedite the abatement process. The second part is the permits. We've done a lot of renovations, but we still have a lot of work to go on the building. It's a large building, so it's a penniless project. Uh, so far, the mayor's been very helpful in getting us the permits. Uh, when we first started the process, it took us over two months to get permits after the plans were submitted. Um, and the mayor was very helpful, and we wouldn't be here with these leases, uh, if it wasn't for, you know, the mayor willing to take meetings with us, uh, as a small business owner, um, and really get things, uh, moving. So we're very thankful for the mayor's help so far. Um, but, you know, there is still a lot of work, and we do need help getting the permits, uh, you know, moving forward quickly, and they have already. And we've, we've been very happy with the building department. Uh, they're very talented, you know, very capable people, uh, there, so we're happy with that. Uh, and then the last point is, we do have seven acres to the north of us that's undeveloped, that's been vacant, uh, and maybe vacant for a while. Uh, we do have plans to develop tractor-trailer parking, which are in the process of being approved. Um, I know tractor-trailer parking is not something you would encourage to come around, but we give this the best use of the land, and it will bring, uh, increased tax property values. Uh, the one thing that we, that would maybe contingent on us doing this is if we get a variance for asphalt grinding. Um, it's not something that's typically allowed or encouraged in villages, uh, but almost every tractor-trailer parking lot in the area, uh, does either have stone or grindings, but very few pay for concrete tractor-trailer parking lots. Uh, the other benefit of grindings are, it is, it is a recycled product, so it is, it is going forward into a green product, uh, that's easier to maintain. Um, and then, you know, directly for Blue Island, our tax lawyers have said, uh, it should bring an increased, uh, amount of fifty thousand in property taxes, uh, if that's allowed. So if you take that over a twenty-year period, which would be our plan, you know, a million dollars increased in value, uh, directly to Blue Island. Um, if we're subject to getting the asphalt, uh, paved lots, uh, we may, uh, continue. Um, but I think the, the cost of the project will be more, uh, than the return, so at that point, it may just stay vacant. So I'd encourage you guys to think about that, uh, when that comes around. That's all for me. If you guys have any questions regarding the project or our plans?
What do you think of the audit? All the going?
With the building, what, what is the building being used for? Is mixed uses in, in a model, import-export? Because you didn't mention what, what the usage was.
Good question will be, it's an industrial building, so it'll be industrial users. Um, the, the leases we have out are for, for logistics companies, so they store project and share it all over the...
Okay, logistics, okay, perfect.
Any other questions for the alderman, the general? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Need your, uh, name and address.
Dan Hugley, one twenty-seven sixty Francisco. I talked to George Durness last, uh, Tuesday from the Sernax food store, and he told me the deal fell through. I wonder if you could explain that to him?
In fact, I haven't heard anything from him. I don't think we've ever heard anything, whether or not you have the requirements...
No, you're supposed to be here tonight, you didn't show up.
Again, we haven't heard...
What happened to building a better Blue Island?
That's what it is, well, you know, we're just trying to get a lot of money...
I don't think you're worried about holding to a better Blue Island. I know they got a hippie lot up there.
Thank you very much.
But, uh, think outside the loop, what happened to that? You're not a man of your word, are you?
Oh, yes, we are, sir.
No, you're not.
For protecting, thank you very much, sir.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Uh, we move on now to presentation of two thousand sixteen audit, Mr. Kasper.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This day before you today, we had the two thousand, for the year, uh, calendar year ends at December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, audited financial statements. I'm gonna give a brief overview. I know I've gone over these at length in the past, uh, so I don't think I need to go over all of the things that we've done before. The audit report is a hundred and thirteen pages long, and I would encourage those, uh, to review those in depth. If you have questions, please feel free, my, uh, give me a call on the, uh, at my office, and I'll gladly go over any of the information here, or I can even come out here to Blue Island, meet with anybody if they have specific questions. What I will do is just do a couple of brief highlights, a couple areas that you might want to look at when you do look at the financial statements in more depth. Uh, we start off with the independent auditor's report, which is the auditor's report as to giving ascitation to the financial statements. And if you go to page two, oh, um, the audit report's three pages long, but the opinion is on page two. And on page two, we have given an unqualified opinion on the statement of, on, uh, on both sets of financial statements that you have. The unqualified opinion is the highest level opinion, when it basically says that anybody reading these financial statements could look at these statements and, and the, uh, financial statement numbers are clearly stated in all material respects into the, in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole, that's what the independent auditor's report says. So when people read the financial statements, they can, uh, feel assured that, uh, the financial position that's being reflected on these statements, they can rely upon to make decisions related to the city of Blue Island. There's other information here that talks about balance of the information that's in the audit report. It's, uh, the opinions are, uh, the information is basically the same as last year, talking about, uh, the required supplemental information. There's a plenty of information in here about your, uh, two, uh, police-fire pension, as well as your I M R F membership, uh, pension that you are involved with the Illinois Retirement Fund. The next set of pages is, is what we call the manage, management discussion and analysis. Those are, that's really a brief overview. It gives a lot of quick information about the audited financial statements, uh, something that you may want to look at. We, we worked this with the finance department, and it is really just a highlight of what's in the financial statements themselves. So those are only pages four through thirteen, I believe, or fourteen, so it's about ten pages, not a lot of reading, some graphs and, uh, financial schedules, everything, a kind of a brief overview of the entire city of, of Blue Island. I'll reference the page fifteen, that is, uh, that is the first basic set of financial statements, and that is what we call the statement of net position. That combines all of the city funds into one set of financial statements, as far as operating funds for the governmental activities. Then you have your business-type activities, which is your water sewer fund and your golf course, uh, yeah, then, which brings us to the total assets, liabilities, and net position of the city of Blue Island. And then you have the component unit, which is the library, and we explain why the library's a component unit in the footnotes. The second page is the statement of head activities, which is on page sixteen, which basically, again, takes the, the operations of the city. We take, uh, we, we start off with the expenses in this particular case first. We subtract out user fees that we may collect, uh, operating grants, capital grants, and then we use, we have state taxes, replacement taxes, state income taxes, things that we get from the state that we can utilize at the discretion of the city council that, uh, reflect the financial position of the city. So you will see at the end that the, uh, let me here, let me read, uh, the changes in net position for the city of Blue Island increases over one million dollars in the, in the course of the year. Now, that takes all your financial statements, puts them, uh, takes all your funds, puts them together as one entity. It records depreciation, it takes into consideration your outstanding debt, the idea is to make it look like a, a for-profit entity. Now, if we go to page seventeen, this is what you normally do when you're doing your budgetary process. These are your funds, your general fund, your special revenue funds, your non-major funds, and I really want to highlight the general fund real, uh, briefly here, because it's the general fund that operates the city. It's what pays for your police, your fire, your, uh, your, your, uh, building department, your public works department. And if you go to page nineteen, it shows that the general fund, basically, what I would look at, based on the amount of revenue and expenses that came in, the re, uh, the general fund ended up with a small surplus of approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's based on over fifteen point five million of revenue and fifteen point, uh, or, excuse me, fifteen point three, I guess I should, my accent's... Fifteen point three, uh, of revenue and fifteen point one million dollars of expenditures. The next couple of schedules are designed to reconcile two sets of financial statements and give you an idea of, uh, how they, how the two of them compare to one another. Finally, the other item that I will bring up is just your proprietary funds, which is your water and golf course. And if we go to page twenty-four, it's the bottom line on what the golf course and water fund did. And as you can see on the operating income, the water fund lost approximately, uh, operations, approximately three hundred forty-eight thousand. When we take into consideration other revenues such as interest expense and transfers in and out, it actually had a deficit of three hundred seventy-seven thousand. On the other side, you have the golf course. The golf course had a slight operating loss of forty-five thousand, however, transfers in, over ninety thousand, actually gave a small surplus of forty-six thousand dollars for the end of the year. The final item on here for you to look at will be on page one oh five. Give me a second to get that, because on page one oh five, we now detail out your special revenue funds, you know, the general obligation bond, which we call that service, and your capital project funds. And this is a highlight of all of the assets on page one oh five, and on page one oh six, then on page one oh seven, these are items that you actually appropriate for your business district, motor fuel tax, special revenue, uh, your tip funds, foreign fire tax fund, your police and fire, or, excuse me, your police, state and federal seizure funds, and then also the money that you contribute to the police and fire pension fund. So that is what is on page one oh seven, one oh eight. And wrapping up on page one oh nine is a breakdown of the police and fire pension funds, the assets that each of the pension funds have, as well as an operating statement, which is on page one ten. And that is a brief summary, so I'm going in great depth, but if anybody has any specific questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Alderman, any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Is it okay if I direct my questions to Mr. Kasper? Thank you, Mr. Kasper, for coming tonight to speak to us. Uh, I, I want to go back to page twenty-four, uh, just regarding the golf course. And I saw, um, that, so depreciation, so depreciation, that's our equipment, lawn mowers, the truck we have, that's depreciating over, over the years. Would that be correct?
That would be correct.
So without, so if we didn't include that, the depreciation loss over, over maintenance equipment and lawn mowers and different things, the golf course, without including that, would it turn the profit higher than, would it turn profits to fifty thousand dollars and not have shown as a loss of forty-five thousand?
Well, well, specifically answering your question for the golf course, it was a hundred fifteen thousand dollars depreciation. So that's all of the, all of the, uh, not the real property, so not the actual golf course itself, your lawn mowing equipment, the, uh, the drainage system, the, the buildings themselves, those are, uh, vehicles, golf carts, so forth, well, golf carts, excuse me. Uh, those are the items that are actually getting depreciated. So from a cash flow standpoint, I guess maybe to answer the question, which is actually on page twenty-five, if you look at page twenty-five at the, at the very beginning, when you take expenses less what you paid out, you actually brought in ninety-eight thousand dollars more for the year. Uh, this year, there was not a lot of capital expenditures. Capital expenditures don't actually show as an expenditure. They get capitalized as a fixed asset, and then they get depreciated over their, uh, expect, uh, their, the number of years, based on how long we believe the asset will exist. And so therefore, we may invest a lot of money in a given year, but it won't be an expenditure, such as your fund financial statements, if we were to buy police cars and we spend a hundred thousand weeks spent in a year. On the golf course, if you spent a hundred thousand dollars, we would actually show it as an asset. Might depreciate it, let's just say, over ten years, go quickly, then there'd only be a ten thousand dollar expense, not a hundred. So to answer your question, page twenty-five does reflect the fact that there was a, a cash flow surplus this year in the golf lot. Does that answer your question?
No, it doesn't. I, I just wanted to point that out, because I know it's mentioned many times that the golf course is a perennial loser, and we should get rid of it, and it doesn't make any money. Without depreciation, I'd have to look back at the other audits. I bet it probably shows that the golf course is making a profit, and I just want to say, Teddy, great job, although I'm mad at you right now, you did a great job, uh, you did, you did a great job this past year, so keep up the good work, thank you.
This was two, twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen, well, he was there, he was there twenty sixteen as well, so thank you, Teddy.
Any other questions, the general? Going on?
I got one. Uh, on page eight, uh, towards the bottom, there's a note about governmental activities. And it says governmental activities increase the city of Blue Island's net position by two point one million dollars, expenses decreased, uh, by two point nine, oh, two million dollars due to a decrease in the cost of public safety and public works. I just wanted to explain, uh, how the figures arrived.
Hey, sir, that will not be just a quick answer, and you have to give me a minute to look at the numbers on that. Because I really have to know what was expensed. William, I, I without having, because when we talk about them decreasing, I actually have to have the fifteen financials, and I don't have the fifteen financials in front of me to be able to tell. So what we're basically saying is, when you look at the expenditures and your public safety, and we look at what they were in two thousand and fifteen, and we compare it to two thousand and sixteen, what we're saying is those expenditures went down. Now, that's a very good question. Both were those expenditures that went down, and I will make it a point to get that information back to everyone. I will get that, uh, so that everybody will understand what those reductions were.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Alderman, go ahead.
Mr. Kasper, in your, um, professional, uh, line of work, what would you do, um, if you were in debt? Would you go for appropriations, or would you lean towards a budget to get out of debt?
Well, if, uh...
Just in your professional opinion?
Well, it should, let me just make sure I understand your question. The, the, the city council, we, uh, the city, by state statute, needs to pass an appropriation. The appropriation establishes your spending authority for the given calendar year. Uh, you can set that appropriation very high on the expectation that maybe somebody will die and leave their lottery inheritance to the village or your city, so you have the ability to spend it. Or you may run your appropriation much more closer to what would be known as a budget. Uh, when you set your appropriation and you look at your revenue, what I typically do is, when an appropriation is set, we also look at what is our projected revenue, the realistic revenue that we really believe we're gonna do. And based on where the revenue falls as a percentage to the appropriation, that's how I would set my budget. So if my revenue is gonna be ninety percent of my appropriation, then I would budget, I would anticipate that I can only expend ninety percent of my appropriation, because I won't have the additional funds to be able to spend more than that. Does that kind of answer your question a little bit, or am I...
Basically, because you set a budget.
Well, yeah, I, I definitely, like I said, I, I, we pass the appropriation, because that's the legal...
Right, right, right.
All right. But then I would work from, like, eternally, I would call a budget, and I would say, this is what I gotta be looking at. And then it gets kind of complicated, because when you're looking at a budget, you're typically gonna spend most of your payroll. So I can't say I'm gonna pay nine tenths of my payroll, or I'm gonna pay nine tenths of our, our fuel that we need for our vehicles, so you really gotta look at which line items work. Can I really control in order to walk, you know, to work within my, uh, a balanced budget to speak revenue equaling expenditures?
Okay. And you were talking about the, uh, building department and public works. Are those departments sort of self-deficient on, I mean, efficient on what they bring in, the revenue that they bring in from citations, whatever, whatever?
No, I can, I can answer that question. I don't, I don't know any municipalities where their public works department is actually bringing in enough money to be self-sustaining. They do have a, you know, you have a refuse fee, but the refuse is paid to a, a waste hauler, but the, the public works department is responsible for, you know, pulling your streets, which there really is no fees collected for pulling streets in the middle of the winter, uh, and all other duties and responsibilities, whether they're to work with curbs that are sidewalks, general maintenance around, uh, throughout the, the village, tree, tree maintenance and so forth, and those don't necessarily generate fees, so the public works department is not going to be a money-making or a break-even operation at all. It will need the general taxes of the city to keep that, uh, department running. As far as the building department is concerned, the building department, uh, unless your permits and your fees are set to, which would probably require an increase and possibly substantial increase to cover the cost of the operation of the building department, the building department will, uh, still continue to operate in the negative, however, it won't be, you are actually right, you aren't collecting revenue, but the revenue is not, uh, when you're out there doing your inspections of buildings, when you're, you know, inspecting new construction, uh, when you're, you know, home inspections and so forth, the fees that you're charging are typically not going to equal what it is for the cost of your inspector your inspector to go out, prepare the paperwork, have the administration process, everything. So that is not designed to be a break-even entity.
Okay. You mentioned something about three, three point, I mean, fifteen point three million. Does that include the water department funds in there as well?
Fifteen point three million would probably was in reference to, let me see, fifteen point three million was in reference to the revenue received by the general fund. So if you were to go to page, let me get the page for you, page two. Page nineteen, page nineteen reflects the fact that the general fund brought in fifteen million, but if you look at the other funds, you've got your tip funds that are bringing in money, and then those non-major funds, which I referenced to you in page one oh seven, one oh eight, the non-major funds brought in another four plus million. Overall, without the water fund, the, the City of Blue Island brought in over twenty-two million dollars. And then if you, then you would add what the fiduciary, what the proprietary funds did, which would be on page twenty-two, a water sewer fund, operating revenues were another five point five million, and the golf course brought in another nine hundred eighty-one thousand, so you have six point five million coming in through what we call the proprietary or enterprise funds. Add that six point five billion to the twenty-two million five, you got about twenty-nine million dollars that this, that the, the City of Blue Island brought in this, in this calendar year.
Okay, great. And I just want to thank Teddy also. This is not to you, Mr. Kessinger, because I've been here for nine years, and I have not known the golf course to make any money, but we've put millions of dollars into it. I just want to thank Teddy for his job. Well done, Teddy. Thank you.
All the way here. Any questions?
In regards to the water fund, could you explain a little more as to your, you were saying that we lost money?
Well, the water, the water fund includes...
That was on page twenty-three.
Correct. Well, page twenty-two starts the operating revenues of the water sewer fund, which I talked about, that brought in approximately five point five million dollars. And when you look at the expenditures before depreciation, we spent about five point three million dollars. Appreciation accounts for another five hundred eighty-five thousand, which is what brought us to our net loss. And I think it's important that we all do understand that depreciation still has to be considered when we're looking at running the, what we call enterprise operations. They are designed, as you were asking, Johnson, they are designed to operate as a for-profit entity. In other words, there's no, there's no real estate taxes coming in, no income taxes or any other source of revenue we get from the state of Illinois that's helping subsidize the water sewer fund. We do that only through user fees. So as, as the infrastructure and City Blue Island is an older community, not a young community, when our infrastructure, our sewers cave in, water, water lines cave in, especially as our wintertime comes, we need to have operating funds to be able to repair the, those lines as they, as they, as they happen. And we don't want to necessarily have to go out to bond, so, you know, part of it is you want to generate surpluses, put that money away, what was called like a rainy day, so when those big infrastructure projects hit us, we don't have to go out and borrow. I would go to page twenty-five, and once again, when you look at twenty-five, like at the golf course, the water fund, now, the, the water fund brought in approximately two hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars more than they paid out to the vendors this past year. But then when you go down the list, you'll also see that there was over five, what was that, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars was expended to buy new, buy capital assets. So when you look at the two hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars of surplus, and then you realize we're spending another seven hundred thousand dollars on financing activities and paying off debt that we've incurred from prior years, you get down to the bottom line that in this particular case, the water fund actually spent six hundred twenty, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars more than they brought in in this past calendar year. So when you look at these numbers, and you put them together, the bottom line here is the water fund for the year spent more money than it brought in. And that's because there were some heavy expenditures, as you can see, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We also had another payoff on debt, is about three hundred plus thousand dollars a year. Interest paid on our, on the, on the debts, another hundred and forty-one thousand, so principal and interest, and the first number's a principal, the second number's the interest. If you add them together, that's four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And then there was some transfers into funds of a hundred thirteen thousand, so overall, we're showing again, when you look at it, when you say change in cash and cash equivalents, you'll note that it's a lot of six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars per year in the water fund. Any other questions? All the way down.
Mr. Kessinger, Mr. Ruthenberg, Director, what equipment do we own out at the golf course?
Yes, me?
Yes.
Lawnmowers, mostly lawnmowers, I would say. I mean, all the equipment we own here. We lease our golf carts, golf carts are on lease. I mean, besides lawnmowers, like other utility carts for maintenance staff, I thought it must have been...
Kitchen equipment, the kitchen equipment, coolers...
So you, okay, kitchen equipment, you have that here too.
Yeah, building, because we got to maintain the building, the roof. Those are all things that will buy the golf course.
So that's all included in equipment? Do we have the lots, sir?
Yes, absolutely, building, these carts.
Any other questions? What, all the...
I just got one blanket statement from sixteen, did the city operate in a surplus or a deficit? Blanket statement. I know it's a lot of details, but, you know, do we operate at a deficit? I know, I know we paid a lot of that off.
We got to get the water fund separately. The water fund, we already said, lost.
Well, before you answer that question, the water fund, I know you said that we spent over six hundred thousand more. Would you say that part of that is the cost that we keep eating from City Chicago raising their rates on us?
Unfortunately, I think all of us here in, that, you know, all the municipalities that get water from Chicago are under the same situation of City Chicago raised their rates so substantially over the last four years and trying to maintain or keep up just with charging the residents what we were paying, what you're paying the City Chicago is a difficult task, as all of you are, when you make those decisions to raise water rates. But that definitely has eaten into the, if I can use these terms, eaten into the profits or the surpluses of the water fund. And there was just another increase, beginning of last year, there was another increase, and I know we'll see another increase supposedly. City Chicago's supposed to keep their water rate increases to the CPI. Now, so we have another big problem, and I think this legislation will change. But to answer your other question, I can, the, what page was it on? Ten, eleven? Well, I forget what page. On page nineteen, if you were to look at, before we did any transfers within funds, any bond proceeds, which are not necessarily revenues, the, the bill operated, outside of the water fund, so all of the funds outside of water in law, had a net surplus of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So when you look at the size of this, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, maybe to us individually is a lot of money, but when you look at the size of City of Blue Island, I want to find out is break even. We're break even, not losing, or not building up either.
Any other questions?
Just one last question. I know we had to discuss this over, Committee of Lords, in the finance committee. From fifteen to sixteen, was there an increase in the amount of percentage that the police and fire pension are funded, based on your audit? It might not be an increase that we'd like to see ideally, but I think I see maybe like half percent in each one.
What did you say? What are we...
The pension fund.
Unfunded liabilities?
Yes.
Okay. Good question you asked, and by the way, we do have pension funds, and on page eighty-four and eighty-five, I can answer those questions specifically. Page eighty-four is your police pension fund, and we have a comparison between the years fifteen and sixteen. And in the year fifteen, the pension fund of the police fund was funded to the tune of twenty-seven point four three percent. So you can see that the actuaries were projecting thirty, thirty-six million by in liabilities, and the assets were ten million, leaving an unfunded liability of twenty-six million, which gets us down to that twenty-seven percent. It went up slightly, and it was a slight uptick of about a half a percent. When you look at sixteen, liabilities did go up, the assets went up, but overall, if you see between the net pension liability, it went up from twenty-six point four million to twenty-seven point three million, or is now at twenty-seven point eight percent. So there was a sliding, I should correct myself, there was a slight increase in the overall funding of the pension fund, less than half a percent. So your pension fund sits at twenty-one percent. If you go to page eighty-five, and you look at your firefighters' pension fund for the years fifteen and sixteen, then you'll see on these particular funds, we're at twenty-two and a half and twenty-two point six three percent between the two years. You see the liabilities versus the assets of the pension fund. So the, we have, the City of Blue Island has a ways to go to get their pension funds funded up. And I believe if you were to look at these two schedules, what I look at, when I advise my, my clients from a consulting standpoint, not from the auditor, I look at what am I spending on the pensions a year versus what are we putting in? And I look at what are we putting in from, we, the city, make contributions, put them on your levies. You add that to the employee, because the employee has money withheld, that goes into the pension plan. Then you were in investments. The idea of the situation is, at a minimum, is to have your contributions exceed what you're paying out in pension benefits. That way, we can start building up assets. If we continue to break even, we can't build up any assets. So if you look on, for sixteen, on the firefighters, on page eighty-five, benefit payments were one million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, and contributions from the city and the employees was nine hundred and seventy thousand. Investment income was another two hundred and sixty thousand, so it was in the firefighters' situation, even though we, the contributions have gone up, because you can see from the years fifteen and sixteen, the, we're still spending more money, pension fund, they're still spending more money than they're bringing in, so they're actually reducing their future assets available with paid pensions. When you look at the police pension fund, look at the same situation, they're paying out currently one point seven million dollars in annual pension payments. One point four million was contributed by the city, another two hundred and sixty-six thousand from the employees, and if you add the, the investment income, in this particular case here, because the investment income did well in comparison to last year, we actually had an increase in the assets of about five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, much better than they were in the prior year. So again, though, we, you know, we're, you know, the pension contributions with the police are about breaking even right now between what the employee and the employer pays in, that's coming in at one, just a little over one point seven million, and we're paying out one point seven million in assets, so we're able to start accumulating more wealth, as long as the market stays well, and we can make money on our investments. However, on the fire side, it's a little bit different. We still don't have the contributions catching up between what the city's kicking in and what the, what the, the officers are putting in as well, based on statutory requirements. We can't control how much the, the employees contribute in, it's based on a percentage of what the state statutes say based on their salary, and those numbers are lagging behind what we're paying down. So we need just, we need strong investments just to break even. So that is something that, I think there's a little bit more, I don't want to, I'm not going to use the term crisis, but there's a little bit more emphasis is needed in increasing those contributions to the fire pension.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Kessinger. And just one last point, I want to give, thank everybody from, first of all, Mayor, and I know Carmen, we utilize a lot of the office, Lori, and Dave's around here and that, but we, we really appreciate all the help we get from all the departments. I know Randy, we, we spend a lot of time in your department as well, and the staff is great, working with my staff, I want to say thank you once again. Just so you know, the employees are very helpful with us, they don't hold back information or make it difficult for us to obtain the information, and Martin will work with us. And again, I want to thank everybody on the board for allowing us to do the audit for the City of Blue Island.
Thank you very much. We knew I'll move on to the next topic discussion. I'm just going to state it in general, as regarding the cancellation of the December twenty-six, two thousand seventeen city council meeting, but before we address that, our city treasurer did bring something to my attention. If you want to mention it?
Yes, we're, we're in a situation which we don't yet have counsel for the twenty-sixth.
It's on.
We don't have counsel for the twenty-sixth. We're in a situation that we have to make some payments that have to be made prior to next council or next finance meeting, that basically, what I, you know, myself, Chairman Austin of Finance, would have to bring up and basically ask the corporate authority to give Lori and Mr. Perez and myself the authority to pay certain bills that have to be paid, payroll, and then certain ones that we feel that we have to pay rather than delaying, because some are at thirty, some are close to sixty days, and the length of time has to be paid, certain ones have to be paid on time. And that's why I'm asking for Chairman Austin, and then to direct that, her motion under finance possibly, to ask the corporate authority to go ahead and do that. If she meets finance on the nineteenth, she will be seeing whatever we have, payroll and accounts payable and anything else, and then it'll go through the process, eventually when the corporate authority reconvenes, it'll go through the process again. So I think you will be able to see it, but these bills have to be paid in advance, that ones that have to be paid.
Council, your recommendation is there a motion?
Do you want to, want to finance?
You can request, you can request a motion.
Did you make, all the, did you make the motion?
So the motion is to authorize payment of bills which must be paid, which include payroll?
Payrolls, from my understanding, payroll must be paid, so...
Of course, but beyond payroll, is there anything else?
Certain, like insurance, service, certain contracts that technically should be paid out as contracts.
You have a motion? You have a second? All the way through, all? Any questions? Go.
Hi.
Hulos, hi. Just, this is part of the cancellation, but...
And no cancel meeting?
Again, this is something that the treasurer just brought.
Could we, could we get a list of which bills? Payroll, insurance, and local?
Slide a statia.
Basically, there's certain bills that, again, it's up to the corporate authority. The corporate authority wishes to hold, whoa, okay, but it's got, it may affect paying interest or paying other stuff, delaying. And at one time, whatever the situation was, a payment that was supposed to go through the credit card can go through, and they shut us off. So the question is, there's certain bills, I'm not sure specifically which ones and accounts payable, but there's certain fractional ones that have to be paid, or should be paid on time. I'll stick with that. It's up to the corporate authority to make the decision.
All the way down.
Yeah, actually, I don't think any of us here have a problem giving authority to, hey, you got to make the payment, you have to make the payment, but the problem is, it's not on the agenda, there's not specific, you're not talking what bills we got paid. So I think the best course of action is, Chairman Austin, you are going to have finance.
January second. January second.
I mean, the, the problem is, is it's not on the agenda, so, I mean, we'll do a special finance meeting, just to, you know, give the full authority, that's, I mean, that's the problem.
I don't think any of us have a problem saying, go out and pay them, but...
Or you want to have a meeting on December twenty-sixth? We can have a meeting on December seventh, twenty-sixth.
Whitman, does this go, does this go under the cancellation of the December twenty-sixth?
Right.
So, I mean, it's not specifically on the agenda, but it does fall under that, doesn't it, does it not?
Correct.
The cancellation of the December twenty-sixth meeting, this payment is billed, because you only get that's handled.
If you knew what bills there were in the amounts, it would be a lot more refreshing to have that information, and then if you, if you...
It's easy to have a meeting to include the bills. That's what I mentioned.
It would be helpful to know this in advance, we could have got it on the agenda, but it's not on the agenda, and I don't want to violate the opening check.
The finance meeting on January second, our next meeting is on January seventh or ninth, or whatever it is. And, I mean, payroll gets paid all the time before anybody sees it, so it's not going to really help, help hold up payroll. Right, so...
Right, and it's the next meeting on January second.
January ninth, when it's going to be approved, and then you lose the chance.
Can I just suggest that the finance meeting meet after council right now to vote on it, seeing that it's not on the agenda, that's what's concerned...
Seeing that it's not on the agenda, that's what's concerned with some of the aldermen. After our meeting now, go on the back, we can't, forty-eight hours.
Um, Chairman, do we meet on the nineteenth?
You meet on the nineteenth, you could authorize.
That's fine. Okay, Kevin.
So we'll just have Finance meet on, uh, seven nineteen.
Is that at seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock, right here.
That's fine. Now we go to the actual thing, cancellation of the December twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen city council, have a meeting. You have a motion? We need this fourth, Oliver, second, Oliver Johnson, any questions? Roque.
Fulos.
Hi.
Fulos, hi, Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi, Proust.
Hi.
Proust, hi, Bellato.
Hi.
Bellato, hi, Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi, Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi, Doughty, you can announce me. You know, because you know, Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Farrell.
Hi.
Farrell, hi, Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi, Thompson.
Hi.
Thompson, hi, Carr. Carr, hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi, Slattery.
No.
Thank you very much. Uh, we move on to mayor's announcements, a couple of them, and one hits home, not personally, citywide. Sandy Mait. Sandy Mait called us this morning thanking us, on behalf of the city and all of you and citizens, uh, she's in the hospital, seriously ill, and this is what she wanted me to reform all of you. She misses all of you, uh, she is suffering from heart problems, uh, wants to thank all of you for your prayers and thoughts to come visit her. And whoever does want to come and visit her, let me know, and we'll forward that information if you don't know already. But she did call us earlier this morning, and we're just forwarding that information to all of you. That's that. Second, we do have Rock Around the Clock, don't forget, December thirty-first, eleven thirty PM fireworks and a great family event. Third, I just received a letter on September twelfth, from St. Benedict's, Dear City Council Members, and it's from Reverend Connor Anstrom, Administrator, St. Benedict's. I am ready to request permission to hold a public negativity display at the Park in Frontal Metro South Dr. Pavilion on Gregory and York. The presentation would be on Saturday, December the twenty-third, beginning with a Christmas play in our church, followed by a procession across the street to park, to the park to sing Christmas carols. I am requesting a police officer who could block traffic while people made their way across York Street to where the activity display would be. The evening event would be finished by eight-thirty PM. Thank you for your cooperation, warm regards, Reverend Connor Anstrom, Administrator, St. Benedict's Street. So I put that up to you.
I make a motion.
Uh, any comments?
I confused block and.
Yeah, it's just, blocking, or public safety.
Need a motion, you see, there's somebody.
Is that fine?
Fine, yes.
Everything okay with that?
Yes.
So do we need a roll call or no? No, okay, that's just. Uh, that's all I have on the mayor's announcements, city clerk's business.
Yes, I need a motion to approve a request from Parkland, Edward Daniel Tagg, Candy Day Fundry, Friday and Saturday, March thirtieth and thirty-first, and also Friday and Saturday, April twentieth and twenty-first, twenty eighteen, six AM, eight PM, or less.
You have a motion, Oliver Donahue, we have a second, Oliver Bellato, any questions? Roque.
Fulos.
Hi.
Fulos, hi, Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi, Proust.
Hi.
Proust, hi, Bellato.
Hi.
Bellato, hi, Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi, Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi, Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue, hi, Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Farrell.
Hi.
Farrell, hi, Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi, Thompson.
Hi.
Thompson, hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi, Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi, fourteen eyes.
Thank you very much.
Next, I need a motion to approve a request from Ms. Corbin, Edward Daniel Jelly Belly Candy Days on Friday and Saturday, April twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen.
You have a motion, Oliver, Rita, second, Oliver Pittman, any questions? Roque.
Fulos.
Hi.
Fulos, hi, Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi, Proust.
Hi.
Proust, hi, Bellato.
Hi.
Viera.
Hi.
Rita, hi, Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi, Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue, hi, Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Farrell.
Hi.
Farrell, hi, Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi, Thompson.
Hi.
Thompson, hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi, Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi, thirteen eyes on one, Thompson.
Thank you very much. Any bits, anything else?
No, that's it.
Any bits?
No bits.
City Treasurer, what is Treasurer's report?
Thank you. Every officer got received a new packet of reconciliation statement pending one hundred and thirty of two thousand seven. As for a motion?
You have a motion, Oliver Ossling, you have a second. Oliver Donahue, any questions? Roque, please.
Fulos.
Hi.
Fulos, hi, Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi, Proust.
Hi.
Proust, hi, Bellato.
Hi.
Bellato, hi, Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi, Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi, Donahue.
Hi.
Donahue, hi, Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Farrell.
Hi.
Farrell, hi, Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi, Thompson.
Ne.
Thompson, hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi, Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi, thirteen eyes on one, Mason.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Casper for the time enough that you put into presenting and all your hard work and open-out consultations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Casper, thank you.
City Attorney, sending?
No report.
Committee reports, committee, Development Committee?
Uh, I came up with that, no report, Your Honor, our next meeting is on January fourth, twenty eighteen.
Thank you very much, Finance Committee?
Finance meeting called ordered December fifth at seven o'clock. Members present, Oliver, Holly, Proust, Farrell, Thompson, Viera, Ossling, also present was Mayor Vargas, City Attorney Horvath, Director of Public Safety Rita, City Clerk Hoiser, Deputy Chief Finance Lloyd Brown, Director of Finance and Administration Mike Mazel, Treasurer Bellato, CPA Consultant Dave Meyer, Lieutenant Zalinski, Deputy Chief of Department of Health, Commander Sisk, Mr. Mark Miller, Mr. Manby, Oliver Slattery, Oliver Pittman, Oliver Carr, Bellato, Rita, and Donahue. There was no public comment. The following have all been approved by the Finance Department. After a long discussion on the twenty-seventeen levy, as per discussion, can I have a motion to annul the levy?
There's a motion, there's a, is there a second? Oliver, Paul, Thurlow, any questions? Oliver, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to amend the levy to, um, switch out the police pension fund and fire pension fund down a little bit to agree with what the Illinois Department of Insurance is recommending for contribution for this year for us, and, um, so that would, we, that would take the police pension fund to one million eight oh eight two fifteen, and bring the fire pension fund to one million one seventy-seven five fifty-five, and then take the total for fire protection tax to eight hundred twelve thousand six ninety-six, and the police protection tax to one million thirty-five thousand five ninety-four.
That's a motion. I have a motion, you have a second, Oliver, Thurlow.
Can I make a motion to table that amendment?
Second. Who have a motion, all right?
There's a motion, there's a second, then the levy to the amounts, um, staying filed, Holly. Would you restate the amounts for the police protection and fire protection?
Uh, fire protection is going to be eight hundred twelve thousand six ninety-six, police protection, one million thirty-five thousand five ninety-four.
So, well, the government increases.
Then, I'm just moving it, I'm, I'm removing, I'm moving it from the pension contribution amount to the protection.
That leaves Roman, the other fourteen to the levy, we have to go up now.
No, that's worth the protection and the fire protection.
What he did was, he took money, he reduced the police pension levy, I am out, reduced the fire pension levy by, um, and increased police protection, the amount of the reduction in police pension.
Which is basically.
Fire protection by the amount of the reduction in fire pension.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Before the end of the week. So, basically, yeah, before the twenty-second.
No, I, that's, I'm, I'm, I just, I'm.
Yeah. I understand what you did.
Let's see, sir.
I would just see amendments, I want to, I will not put a motion.
You can only put on the, lay on the table or postpone the main motion itself, not the amendment, so you have to vote on the amendment at this point in time.
Okay.
That's my interpretation of the votes.
That's fine, we need eight votes on the amendment?
Pardon?
Eight votes on the amendment?
You need eight votes to pass the amendment, this, the amendment itself, that's my majority, yes.
Okay. So is there?
So you have to now vote on the amendment, the amendment, just, just to restate the motion for the purposes of the city council. The amendment by Oliver and Holly is to reduce the police, or to change the amount of the police pension fund, uh, or the levy for the police pension fund, change, in the amount stated, to change the amount of the levy for the fire pension fund in the amount stated, to change the amount of police protection in the amount stated, and change the amount of fire protection in the amount stated. If you need the amounts restated, Oliver and Holly has those amounts if anybody needs that, but I don't want to mistake the amounts, I was trying to write them down.
Is there questions now? Comments?
You got any other questions?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, we had a very long meeting, fine committee of the whole last week, we compromised on these numbers after much discussion and debate. I encourage us all to vote no on this amendment, because we did all agree last week on the numbers, um, so I encourage.
Thank you. Oliver Bellato.
Reiterating, Oliver Donahue, we spent almost three hours at Finance Committee, any of the whole, to try to not kick the can down the road, as always said, with the pensions, and levy a little bit additional into the pension funds, and this amendment would go back on what we agreed to after a three-hour discussion and open meeting, and I would suggest the council vote no on the adjustments. Thurlow?
So, I very much respect the alderman's position here about the need to fund the pension fund, and I do, I totally agree with that. Uh, I do wish that we would reconsider what we did, spend a long time deliberating, that doesn't mean that we have to do what we did last week. The city's budget is very, very thin, um, I do agree with Oliver and Holly that this change is not desirable, but necessary in order to run the city for the next year, so I, I see the favor about the amendment.
Oliver Bellato.
When we had that meeting, it was before we had the audit report, and, and I do think that the audit report is, uh, showing that it could be kind of close for next year, and this is actually from twenty sixteen, and from what Dave Meyer has been saying, that twenty seventeen is, uh, not any better, if, in, in some cases, worse, uh, so I am just concerned with, uh, the pension money, thankfully, goes directly from the property tax into the pension fund, so it doesn't come through the general fund, so if there is some sort of mistake or some sort of problem, uh, with the infrastructure of the city, it's not like we can go and, and use this money and say, well, we'll make it up later, it's a, it could put us in a bad position. That's what, that's all I'm concerned about, um, the Illinois Department of Insurance numbers are what I'm recommending to change it to, uh, which was, uh, we saw the police numbers at that meeting, and then I got fire numbers today, basically.
Oliver, is it?
I too was going to say, um, that, to reiterate what the audit said, and that we were not paying, that we were paying more out than what we were putting in, and that I think that since we also, since we were here for almost three hours, and we did agree on a number, that we should stay with what we agree upon, since it was middle of the road.
Oliver Bellato.
Also, to further state that this, these were the numbers we agreed to, are less than what the auditing firms of the pension for the fire and police wanted, and also what was included with the agenda with forty hours notice was the numbers that we all agreed to, and I think it just doesn't do a fair justice to the pension boards to come here and adequately have their voice heard if the numbers are changed at the meeting we're going to get on. So, I'm, again, asking the council to vote no against the adjustment, and go back to the numbers that came out with the agenda.
I could also remind, uh, the council, and again, I am very sympathetic about the alderman's concerns are, um, and if it proves to be that the city does have a more successful financial year than we thought, we can elect at a later time to increase the contribution, or make an additional contribution to the pension fund, which I would be very much in favor of if that was feasible.
Oliver, you have a question?
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't you, um, second the motion, the first motion by Oliver Ossling?
For the, the, after you're pledged.
The first motion.
I did make the motion, I asked for a motion.
I thought you made the motion and you seconded it, and then Oliver and Holly said, uh, ribbon and amendment.
Yeah, I, I seconded the motion, just to permit the discussion.
Okay, just.
Yeah, no, I did, you're right.
Roll call on the motion that's on the table.
This is the roll call on the amendment proposed by Oliver and Holly, and that amendment would be to reduce the levy for the police pension fund from one million nine hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred one dollars to one million eight hundred eight thousand two hundred fifteen dollars. To reduce the proposed levy for the fire pension fund from one million two hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars to one million one hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars. To increase the levy for police protection from eight hundred forty-nine thousand one hundred eight dollars to one million thirty-five thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars. And to increase the fire protection tax levy from seven hundred sixty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars to eight hundred twelve thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars. In that effect, the total levy would be zero, the total levy would still remain the same, total levy for all of the funds that are subject to the levy.
Just wanted to, to make, make a transparency, again, we met for three hours last week, we had an agreed number, we could have had another three hours, but this was just gonna change. Uh, I don't think this is a fair, transparent process for residents, for the aldermen, for the pension boards, I encourage a no vote on this amendment. Thank you.
Roll call, please, roll call.
We have questions.
Roll call, please. Fulos.
I abstain.
Fulos abstain. Johnson.
Yes.
Johnson, yes. Proust.
Yep.
Proust, no. Bellato.
No.
Bellato, no. Viera.
Yes.
Viera, yes. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no. Holly.
Yes.
Holly, yes. Farrell.
Hi.
Farrell, hi. Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi. Thompson.
Hi.
Thompson, hi. Carr.
No.
Carr, no. Pittman.
No.
Pittman, no. Slattery.
No.
Slattery, no.
It's just, it's just.
Number fails. Six, I, seven, eight, one abstain. One abstain? Correct.
Is it not to go back to the originals? There is a motion in a second on the original. Are we ready? Roll call.
Blueos?
Aye.
Blueos, aye. Johnson?
No.
Johnson, no. Proust?
Aye.
Proust, aye. Bilal?
Aye.
Bilal, aye. Viera?
No.
Viera, no. Rita?
Yes.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
No.
Hawley, no. Verenlo?
Aye.
Verenlo, aye. Ossling?
No.
Ossling, no. Thompson?
No.
Thompson, no. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Nine eyes? Nine eyes, smack? There's a nine five, nine five, or a...
Let it pass. Go ahead, Tom.
Okay. Request to waive Maureen Daly's permit fee. After discussion, it was agreed upon charging forty-four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. I make a motion to approve.
You have a motion, do we have a second? By Alderman Viera. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Blueos?
Aye.
Blueos, aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Proust?
Aye.
Proust, aye. Bilal?
Aye.
Bilal, aye. Viera? Viera, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Verenlo?
Aye.
Verenlo, aye. Ossling?
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
No.
Slattery, no. Six eyes, one eye.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Approval of payroll for twelve one, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of three hundred sixty-nine thousand four hundred eleven dollars and eighty-seven cents. I make a motion to City Council to approve.
Just a motion, we have a second, Alderman Viera. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Blueos?
Aye.
Blueos, aye. Johnson?
No.
Johnson, no. Proust?
Aye.
Proust, aye. Bilal?
Aye.
Bilal, aye. Viera?
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Verenlo?
Aye.
Verenlo, aye. Ossling?
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Thirteen eyes, and a...
Thank you.
Approval of accounts panel for December sixth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of three hundred eighty-nine thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. I make a motion to City Council to approve.
A motion, we have a second, Alderman Hawley. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Blueos?
Aye.
Blueos, aye. Johnson? Johnson, aye. Proust?
Aye.
Proust, aye. Bilal?
Abstain.
Bilal abstain. Viera?
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
No.
Donahue, no. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Verenlo?
Aye.
Verenlo, aye. Ossling?
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Hawley, one more.
Thank you very much.
A resolution approving the renewal of Class Six fee tax incentive for Betty's Pizza or Reynolds Rogers Holding at one twenty-nine forty-nine California. I make that in form of a motion to approve.
Got a motion, got a second, Alderman Donahue, what? Oh, you have a question or a motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I know I'm normally in opposition to these, but I wouldn't say I'm in full support of this one. Fager's goes above and beyond everything we ask from the city. They're always giving back, donating pizzas, coming to city events. So this is one, and I think it's well worth having him stay in town and giving him a little break for the business. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Alderman, go ahead.
I have to agree with Donahue, who's too hard sometimes. They also...
It's the season.
It's the season. It's the season. Besides that, we have a lot of Blue Island employees working for Betty, so that's given us access.
Seventy-five, yeah.
From my hearing, seventy-five just employees in the city of one.
Absolutely.
All right, well, then I'm being grinch. I do oppose, and I will be opposing generally, the rules, and Fager's is a great place, and I really don't like the overnances, but I'm going to, I think it's inappropriate thing.
Right, I need it. Principal, Principal, all right, go ahead. Anybody else, any other comments? If not, roll call, please.
Blueos?
Aye.
Blueos, aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Proust?
Aye.
Proust, aye. Bilal?
Aye.
Bilal, aye. Viera?
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Verenlo?
Aye.
Verenlo, no. Ossling?
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson?
No.
Thompson, no. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. All right.
Thank you.
Oh, I took a lot of things.
Okay. No further business. The meeting was adjourned at nine fifteen. Our next meeting, and I just want to ask Deputy Brown if she is available for the nineteenth for finance meeting. Okay. And I'll see you for a Friday. Okay, so our next meeting...
We have one other item on there.
We have one item. I have a receipt for a cash check as asbestos inspection, twenty-four, twenty-seven, West Street, estimated two thousand dollars.
Oh.
That's definitely...
Yes, okay, I'm sorry. I make a motion for the approval of the cash check asbestos inspection at the twenty-four, twenty-seven West, one hundred and twenty-seven Street. That's the old Blue Island Nursing Home. The estimated amount is two thousand dollars, and I make that in form of a motion to approve.
Got a motion, we have a second, Alderman Viera. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Blueos?
Aye.
Blueos, aye. Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson, aye. Proust?
Aye.
Proust, aye. Bilal?
Aye.
Bilal, aye. Viera?
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Verenlo?
Aye.
Verenlo, aye. Ossling?
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye.
Thank you.
Okay. No further business. Our meeting was adjourned at nine fifteen. Our next meeting is December nineteenth, seven thirty. I'm sorry, December nineteenth, seven o'clock, East Annex.
All right. Public Health and Safety Committee?
Yes, Your Honor, we held our meeting, so we'll have minutes next meeting. But I do have a few documents I'd like to read into the record.
Go ahead.
The first one is an email from Ken Doppling dated November first. Subjected resume, says, Dear Mayor Vargas, attached will find my resume and cover letter for the position of Fire Chief. If you have any questions, please feel free to email me or contact me. And he gives his phone number. It was dated November the first. The second email was from Jim Klinker, dated November the thirtieth. And says, For the record, I do not have a man-to-man agreement to transition the new chief, as the mayor said multiple times. At one time, back on October second, when I informed the mayor I was retiring, I offered to help the new guy after I left, and he had any questions. I assumed there would be at least a week or so of overlap, and I would be showing the guy everything on my own time. I didn't hear any more from the mayor until October twenty-fifth, when I met with the mayor, Director Rita, and Attorney Horvath to discuss my replacement and the process the city was going to take. I went home and thought about the lack of transition, as nothing was being done. It really bothered me, and it still does, that there was no provision for a transition. I take great pride in my department, and thought there needed to be some transitions, especially since negotiations and appropriations are coming up quickly. The Fire Chief plays an important role in public safety, and someone needed to be incident in command in the event of an emergency. I proposed a plan to the mayor and Director Rita on separate occasions. The plan was for me to stay until February twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, to train the new guy and help with appropriations and negotiations in exchange for a pay raise after the first application. The purpose of this raise was to counteract the loss in future pension increase I would incur by staying after November thirtieth, twenty seventeen. This raise would have caused the city less than one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars total during the months of January and February. I ran this plan past Director Rita on October twenty-seventh. He thought it was a good plan that would be beneficial to both parties. I then attempted to contact the mayor, since he didn't respond to the text I sent him, and Director Rita asking to meet with them again about my proposal. That text was sent on October twenty-sixth. Director Rita is the only one who responded. After the weekend, I contacted Marisol and asked for an appointment with the mayor. She called back and set it up for October thirty-first at one P.M. in the mayor's office. I explained my proposal to the mayor, and he stated he thought it was a good idea. He appeared relieved that I was willing to stay out and help. He stated he had to run by the city attorney and would get back to me. I informed him that I needed to apply for my pension on Thursday, November sixteenth, twenty seventeen, if my idea wasn't acceptable. He said he would get back to me at the beginning of next week, November fifth to the eleventh. I then stated that after the end of February, if the new guy had any further questions, he could just call me, and I would be glad to help. This meeting, like the one in which I gave my retirement notice, lasted all of about four minutes. I waited patiently and never heard from him again. I tried contacting him via text and was never answered. Finally, after another email, I was eventually contacted by Carrie Horvath around the end of next week, to discuss my proposal with her. He sent Leslie Kennedy to see me on Monday, November thirteenth, twenty seventeen. She had some crazy idea about me retiring on the thirtieth and getting reappointed on December the fourth, staying until the end of February, which she thought would somehow increase my salary. For your information, it would not. She asked me to contact our pension attorney to see if this plan would work. I did, and it would not, and I let her know that. She also had an idea about creating a position as Fire Department Administrator and paying me until the end of February. She stated I could be a double-dipper and collect the pension as well as the salary. After I informed her that I would not do that, as I don't want my name dragged through the mud as a double-dipper at the end of what I consider a stellar career, she said she would keep working on ideas and get back to me. She stated that due to the current city council, she didn't think would approve a pay raise, but yet she offered to create an entirely new position. This doesn't make sense to me. Besides, if I wanted to work until the end of February, I would have put my papers in then. Her plans would have created a financial loss for me due to a delayed pension start. I love this department and this town, but I'm not going to take a personal financial loss because the city couldn't figure out how to replace me in a timely manner. On Tuesday, November fourteen, there were numerous emails between myself and Leslie Kennedy regarding her ideas. She did not seem to grasp what I was saying. The mayor and Carrie Horvath were both copied on all of those emails. Again, I waited patiently. On Thursday, I texted the mayor and told him I would be filing my paperwork at the four P.M. pension meeting. I offered to meet with him again before then to try and figure something out. I emailed the same message to him, Carrie Horvath, and Leslie Kennedy. Surprise, surprise, the mayor never responded. Finally, at eleven oh eight A.M., I received an email from Carrie Horvath telling me I should probably just put my pension application in. Even I have to say they would keep working on it and sorry for the confusion. I filed my application and was never contacted again by any of them. So the mayor must have assumed that I was willing to stay and help with the transition, since other than the meeting on October twenty-fifth, we only spoke together for less than eight minutes total regarding my departure and replacement since early October when I gave notice to him. All I was looking for was an answer to my proposal. If it wasn't going to happen, someone could have told me without my waiting and what seemed like bad dream to get an answer. Sorry for the long explanation, but this is part of the reason I was so aggravated at the council meeting. The other reason is that the mayor and the interview committee all knew that Christina Wallace did not meet the minimum qualifications and was still interviewed. I received her resume via email from Marisol around seven fifty-eight A.M. on Monday the I received a resume via email from Marisol around seven fifty-eight A M. on Monday, the twentieth, the date of her scheduled interview. I reviewed it as I had done with the others, and I responded off at twelve thirty-five P M. that she did not meet the degree requirement and stated we shouldn't waste our time interviewing a candidate that could not hold a position by law. This email went to the entire interview committee. Marisol responded that, quote, "We are aware of the qualifications and the lawyers suggested that we proceed with the interview anyway." So not only did the mayor mislead the city council last Tuesday, so did the city attorney. And Ken Doppling did meet the minimum requirements of the statute, something else the attorney misled the council on. I wasn't aware of Ken's application until the night of the council meeting. In closing, it's been a great career, and I am truly honored to have worked for the citizens for over thirty-two years. It's sad that my departure had to be clouded by untruths spoken by the mayor and city attorney, both people that should represent the citizens well. I am a big proponent on honesty and telling the truth, and it has been my experience that if someone lies once, they will continue to lie. Good luck on the city council, and thanks for working to make my hometown a better place. I'm around town and can explain this more if you would like.
Anything else?
Yes, sir. There's another email from Ken Doppling dated December the first, and it says, "Mayor Vargas, I have just received the last city council," or I have just viewed the last city council meeting where you made an appointment of fire chief. During Attorney Horvath's reading of the requirements as put forth on the city's website, I do have one of the requirements that would allow me to apply for the position of fire chief stated as ten years of service. Although several applicants may have had more qualifications on paper than I, for the state statute that was on your website, I still qualify for an interview. Furthermore, I did turn the application through email sixteen days ahead of the cutoff date. Maybe you should look at my original email, which is at the bottom of this page dated November first. Also, I gave a copy of my resume to your secretary days prior to the cutoff date. I have another email that was received from Jim Klinker just today, and it says, "Public Health and Safety Committee members, for whatever reason, I just re-watched the last city council meeting. I told myself I was done with those after this meeting, but for some reason, I felt compelled to watch it again. I hope you all read my last email detailing the events of my notice of retirement, lack of action by the mayor, and the transition period I proposed. The video shows the mayor claiming that it was not, quote, 'financially good for me,' and that is why my proposal was rejected. While that is true, he neglects to mention the fact that he never returned any of my calls, texts, or emails leading up to the day I submitted my pension benefits application, November sixteenth, twenty seventeen. I tried to track him down multiple times during the two weeks prior to this date. He completely avoided me. All I wanted was an answer. I wasn't looking to make money off of the situation. As I stated, the total amount was less than fourteen hundred dollars for the duration of the three months. My intentions were honest in that I was worried about a complete lack of transition. A simple no would have sufficed as I was ready to retire. My proposal was a way for the city to ensure a smooth transition and also protect the citizens. I guess since I spent my entire career on public safety in Blue Island and the fact that I reside here drives me to make sure the people are protected as well as can be. In my professional opinion, the lack of any type of transition period jeopardized the safety of the city of Blue Island and its residents. This is solely the responsibility of the mayor. He had plenty of time to interview for the position and leave time for transition. His inability to decide what to do resulted in Chief Rita being appointed on the twenty-eighth, starting on December first. As you all know, my departure date was November thirtieth. For the record, after some deep thought, I emailed Chief Rita on the morning of December first and offered my personal cell number as a way to contact me if the need arose. I did this out of respect for my city, my department, the safety of the Blue Island Fire Department members, and in no way was this part of any handshake agreement that the mayor made up in his head. I wish the best for Chief Rita and the Blue Island Fire Department. The mayor's inability to make a decision or even contact me leaves me disgusted. After thirty-two-plus years of dedicated service, I would like to thank the man who could have returned my phone calls, texts, and emails. I guess I was mistaken. After speaking to other people, this seems to be his way of dealing with issues. I have one last one from Ken Doppling dated today, December the twelfth. Says, "Mayor Vargas, this email is being sent in response to you denying my request for a private meeting with you in regards to your statements made at the last city council meeting. Several days ago, I went to your office and spoke with your secretary requesting a meeting with you. I received no telephone call or email, so today I return for an explanation, and your secretary informed me that your response was no meeting was necessary. I disagree with this decision, considering you and the city attorney made false statements surrounding my resume and my qualifications regarding application for fire chief. I'm asking you to reconsider this decision and rectify these statements."
Anything else?
That's all. I have copies to give to the clerk to enter into the record.
That's fine.
And I do have to say that I am extremely disappointed in the way that these things have gone, both in the mayor and the city attorney. These interviews could have been held in a proper fashion. Director Reader should have been part of this. All the candidates who applied should have been considered, and the misrepresentations of truth about when resumes were received and the lack of response shows considerable unprofessional nature.
Thank you very much.
And by the way, our next meeting is January the ninth.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson?
One question.
Alderman Carr, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Has nothing to do with the iteration you've just read into the record. It does have to do with the email which I sent to you today, and I'm wondering if you acted in derogation of the advice that I included in the email, or if you withheld consideration of the commander's position based upon the opinion I stated to you in the email. What did you do? Did you act on it, or did you just ignore the advice that I gave you in the email?
It was discussed, and this was merely a reappointment.
It was a what?
This was a reappointment of the commander's position.
Makes no difference if it was a reappointment or not.
It is. It is in the city ordinances that the Public Health and Safety Committee gets to appoint the commanders.
Did you read my email?
Yes, sir.
Did you understand that I told you that there's no authorization for the city council committee to make an appointment?
According to our city ordinances, which have been voted on, there is grounds for us to make the appointments.
Do you understand that a city council cannot act in derogation of state statute?
So now can be recognized, this is not city attorney business to ask questions with elected officials. You had your moment at the beginning of the agenda. This is not a perjury. I have my hand raised for a moment of time. It's not city attorney business.
If I may, Alderman Carr received a communication.
This sounds like bullying on an alderman. Just rest on the statement.
I'm asking her a question, and I think that she can give me an answer. I think she's perfectly capable of doing that.
The format is right here. After you've already had the opportunity under city business, under city attorney business, the meeting was earlier today. Why ask right now?
This is under public safety, isn't it?
I'm asking.
I'm asking Alderman Carr a question.
The thing is very unprofessional, but city attorney putting Alderman's spot, that's all.
I answered, and your email came extremely late in the day, I might add.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your posting of your agenda until late yesterday, and I responded as quickly as I could by advising you not to do what I believe you probably just did.
Municipal Services Committee.
I did have one question. Could you please remind me who was in the hiring for the fire chief?
Do you want me to mention the ones who didn't want to be named? I'll mention.
No, just who was in for the fire chief.
Chief Klinker and Alderman. And we had two other aldermen who were invited who did not attend.
Okay, thank you.
Municipal Services Committee.
On November twenty eighth, twenty seventeen, at six oh one P M., municipal committee meeting was called to order with Alderman Donahue Carr, Slattery Bellato present, as well as John Rita, Jason Slattery, Ted Williamsburg, Eric Alvarez, Tanya Avila, and Alderman Johnson, and student Donna from Central High School. There was no public comment. A golf course report was given with info on Golf Now app, which would allow discounts, receipts, and perks to golfers to generate more cash. They are in need of two new registers and maybe could order in both with the clerk's office. Discussion ongoing on ongoing capital projects. Rec Center report was given, info on the upcoming events, such as Santa House and Christmas Party, which will be on December twenty-third at six P M. They will be giving away hams and turkeys that were donated. Discussion regarding the Judiciary Committee will be drafting an ordinance for handicap parking rules. Handicap parking requests were passed, and I'd like to put them in motion. Ordinance restricting portions of certain streets for handicap parking only at twenty-six, thirty-four, one hundred, twenty-second Street, twenty-one, and twenty-one, twenty-seven Canal Street, and twenty-three oh seven Canal Street within the city of Blue Island, County of Cook, State of Illinois. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Motion, do you have a second? By Alderman Donahue, any questions?
Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausta.
Aye.
Frausta, aye.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera. Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
No.
Slattery, no. Thirteen eyes and one eye.
The motions were made by Alderman Carr and the second by Alderman Slattery. Voice vote, motions carried. Public Works Report was given, discussion regarding the last parade. Public Works has a few vehicles entered in the parade. Jim Postro will be responsible for turning on and off the lights, cleanup crew for early Sunday morning, barricades to be put up and taken down to block Western Avenue. Also, there will be garbage cans set up and picked up. Safety Director Rita, Deputy Chief Cornell, and Public Works Supervisor Jim Postro will be volunteering to coordinate these efforts. Tanya Avila came before the committee requesting the need for an interpreter at public hearings and city council, since forty-seven percent of the city is Hispanic. A brief summary of the cost, which would include headsets, a pen of twenty is one thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars, and forty-five dollars an hour for Miss and Ellos interpreting fees, with the minimum of half hour in case of cancellations. An overwhelming response in favor. Motion to approve and passed to the Finance Committee. Motion by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Carr. Voice vote, all in favor, motion carried. Also, we have a resolution for maintenance work on State of Illinois facilities under the jurisdiction of Illinois Department of Transportation. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second? By Alderman Donahue. Any questions? There's a question by Alderman Johnson.
And this vote is for what, aye-bad?
Right.
Yes. Any questions?
Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausta.
Aye.
Frausta, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye.
Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
No.
Slattery, no. Thirteen eyes and one eye.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn at six fifty-two. Motion by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Carr. Voice vote, all in favor. Our next meeting, due to Christmas, we're canceling the December twenty-sixth meeting, and it was agreed upon that our next meeting will be January twenty-third at six P M. Any say no?
Judiciary Committee, there are three ordinances designating three properties for historic landmarks status. Does that put this up as one motion or three separate motions?
Are you talking about all three ordinances?
Yeah.
You can ask for a motion to approve all three ordinances in this time, since they're all on the same subject.
Yes, okay, I agree. So the ordinance, there are three ordinances. One designating twenty-five, forty-seven Walmart Street, a second designating one-two-eight-four-six Maple Avenue, and a third designedating one-two-nine-one-four Brown Street, all as historic landmarks. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
There's a motion, there's a second by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Alderman, go ahead. Johnson, please, first.
Yes, Chief. Question. With those homes as historic homes, are they more or less made to be to the standard of how they were built for whatever date they were built in? And second of all, are those people here that actually owns those properties?
Any of the homeowners here want to answer that question? The other one?
As to the requirements, the urgent home? I don't want to speak without more specific knowledge, but my understanding is that they are required to maintain the house to certain standards that would not change their character and that those would be subject to review when, you know, if they were to apply for a permit for any work.
Okay.
I think that's restricted to the extra.
We're talking about historically, right?
Correct.
Which means what? More or less tax-free?
No, no, no.
Or does it have a tax?
No.
Okay, so with being historic, it only has to have what percentage of restoration or to its original form?
I'm not aware of a specific percentage, but I think that's what I'm not aware of.
I don't know. That's why I'm just asking.
Alderman?
It's mainly that they have to use appropriate materials that would have been used at the time that the building was built originally. Any additions or whatever would have to be approved by the Historic Preservation Commission, which is charged with issuing certificates of appropriateness for anything that's a building permit is called for on historic property in town before they can do the, before they can issue a permit.
Okay, but they, you know, like Freddie and I were talking about the issue earlier about, I'm sorry, Alderman Bellato and I were talking about an issue earlier about vestos and things like that, so we wouldn't have to worry about any of those. Okay.
Yeah, it's exterior.
Okay. And those, these applications were all submitted by the owners. Is there a request, desire to have?
And that's why I was asking, since it was then request and desire were to hear. That's all.
There's a motion, a second question.
I believe Mr. Alderman Hollywood correct. This is the first ones we've had in five years?
I think there's been one since.
It's been, yeah, close to it. Might have been longer, yeah. This very, I'm a history person, I teach history and then big into architecture. I'm just really happy we're starting to do this. I want to see more homes apply for this. It protects the homes, it gives advice and guidance to the homeowners, and it's also, if someone, that home doesn't have to be like a special pretty home, it could be any house, anywhere in the town, anywhere in the city, if there's some historical significance to it, that's all. I think I should, the guy I'd like to see is on every single agenda, just my personal home.
And I can probably say.
Can a boxcar also be included? Can a boxcar? I know there was one on Canal Street that was recently taken down in the nineties, a boxcar house, one-two-thirty-five, it was flying hard.
And I just would like to say in full disclosure, my home was designated as a historic home about five years ago. I just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
All right, we got a second. Roll call.
Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausta.
Aye.
Frausta, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Yeah.
Slattery, aye. Fourteen eyes and one eye.
Thank you very much. Before we go into Alderman and Alderman comments, the city treasurer needs some clarification. Go ahead.
Need clarification with this payroll and accounts payable. Corporate authority has to give me direction. So I can pass it on. Otherwise, if you go to finance the nineteenth, the finance is not corporate authority, and make recommendations to the corporate authority, and I have to have direction. Otherwise, my name, the mayor's name are on that thing, and I'm not going to release or cut any checks until corporate authority gives me the grant of authority or whatever. And I apologize if that was my responsibility, if we had an agenda, I apologize. But at the same time, I have to have direction, or somebody has to give me a direction. If you want to hold the checks, find me with me. I need direction.
Alderman, aye.
We're already in the Alderman comment, but I'll just say this, where are we set up with finance meeting? We know we're going to go push it through, then we should just do a special meeting right after finance, and as long as we meet the minimum quorum there, I'll take care of it, right?
Finance is not a special city council.
You just set up finance for the nineteenth.
Right, otherwise, why do we have a finance meeting?
That's what I'm saying, we're going to have a finance, and we know we're going to approve that, giving you the authorities. Immediately after that ends, we have a quick city council meeting. There's your corporate authority that I promote.
You want to schedule a special city council meeting for the nineteenth for the special purpose of just acting on those items which will include, not only include the payroll and panels through that point in time, is that correct?
That's what I'm recommending, that, you know, the mayor issue, that's what we have to do to be in compliance. Done deal. But if that means a compliance, then.
So you make a motion, is there a second to that?
We're, we're, we're. We're in the Alderman comment, you know. You make a motion, you just throw up the agenda for special meetings, there's no
We just scheduled a meeting.
Schedule a meeting, a meeting for the city council for December nineteenth to immediately follow the meeting of the finance committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe, as you told me, that under your ordinances right now, you're supposed to actually meet the second and third Tuesdays of the month in December, but because of the way you've always scheduled your meetings, you've always thought second and fourth. So your ordinance is already allowed for it. You want to schedule a meeting and have it posted, just like a regular meeting, but with a very small agenda.
Would be the only thing on the agenda.
The concern is that we're going to pay these bills, correct?
Until the corporate authority says yes.
I understand that, but are you going to bring the bills that we're going to pay to finance? Would that be?
On the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Those will be prepared on the nineteenth. The fifteenth payroll of fifteen will be on there, I assume already. The fifteenth payroll will be on there. Okay, the accounts payable could be up to the, whatever the cutoff is, okay? But it will not include payroll for the twenty-ninth. That'll come up at the next finance meeting.
Will you generally approve the payroll at arrears anyways, is that correct?
Yes.
That's the methodology you employ. So other than payroll, if there are other bills that have to be paid that you're aware of, you have to alert finance committee and the city council so they can authorize payment.
Hey, those will be, okay, we're going to go in the future ones.
My question is, Treasurer Bellato, Treasurer Bellato, without paying this or making this meeting before the nineteenth, are we in jeopardy of, like, getting our lights cut off, flickering out? I'm just asking, I'm asking a question because I don't know.
I really, I don't think so, but there might be penalties on certain.
So more or less, we'll be paying more money?
Main issue, I'm concerned, but I need the authority. If we're going to meet on the nineteenth and have finance and have corporate authority there, that's fine. That answers my question.
So will we just have it on the nineteenth?
Isn't it just insurance and sanitation?
That's what I'm saying.
You have to have this city council.
It doesn't have a bill. Sorry, which one is it?
Yeah, that's the reason.
I don't have a whole resume.
Right. So we meet on the nineteenth, right after the finance.
And you have a limited agenda for the nineteenth. Merry Christmas.
Alderman can answer some comments. Alderman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like an explanation to Mr. Doppling and then what Mr. Klinker brought up. I think you always ask in residence some sort of explanation.
Want me to open it up?
I would like to know about why did you interview Mr. Doppling and not ask Mr. Klinker?
The truth.
And then you can blame me for voting no against Mr. Klinker, but we told you why we voted no back in June. If you would have brought it again later, what did we ask? We wanted the fullest.
Well, here it is. Are you ready?
Well, this is what I'm saying. If you had brought Mr. Klinker again later, the fullest. So it's not my fault what happened with this transition and all this, because you tried to pin it on me and Nancy and Alderman Bellato and Cairo and his last friends. I would like an explanation about what happened.
Mr.?
Okay, Mr. Doppling and Mr. Klinker.
Let me get this.
Thank you.
I got information that happened, people, that there was meetings outside of city walls regarding the position of fire chief, okay, outside of city wall, without my permission, and I can name names if you want me to name names.
Yeah, name names.
And location.
Name, make the locations, please.